The United States of America to the Republic of Washington stands on my nation under God.
May I have a form that's approval of the agenda in minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
If I'm moving second through our discussion and then all is fair to say hi.
Hi.
Both some sort of motion carry oath of office for everyone.
Yeah, I think we'll just do this in one swoop. It's Jeff, Teresa, Jake, Enos. So. Raise your hand. I know your name.
Hi, Aaron Sullivan.
To solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And that I will faithfully. And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties. Of the office of. In Worth County, Iowa. As now or hereafter required by law. So help me God. Amen. Well.
You know, doing any fun? Have we been there since? Anything legal? Well, be legal. No, I think we're good.
Okay, and then since Teresa's here. We can answer that with Jolene.
Hi, Jolene Hickel, having been appointed deputy recorder, having been appointed deputy recorder. Of Worth County. Under Chris Olson, recorder of said county. Under Chris Olson, reporter of said county. Who solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution. Who solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will discharge. The duties of deputy reporter. The duties of deputy recorder. Recording to the best of my ability, according to the best of my abilities to help me God, so help me God.
And now, does that one need a notary? Yeah, so sign that one upstairs, because I forgot to. Okay, we're good now.
We're good, man. I guess I'll just ask for, um, we apparently have somebody in juvenile detention right now.
Adams.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, he's been out now. You you've got a couple of months when you won't get any bills on.
Okay, because there's an estimate of roughly twenty one thousand for next year for doing the pension, which is curious.
Yeah, and I'm guessing we probably just blew that.
Well, that's for, I think, the coming year.
Yeah, yeah, well, and all they're doing is probably estimating by what we've paid in the last year or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, I just.
He shouldn't be going back to detention, he'll be going into replacement. Paid elsewhere.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's just it's for their budgeting purposes, they just put it in as an estimate or whatever, and I just. That's one of the first times I've seen a big number of North Counties down there, we're usually like.
We've been getting hit this year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
He needs to turn eighteen.
He was he was in for about. Five months.
Well, I know we had one in a little while, I didn't know it was still in there and.
Well, and it's a hundred and fifteen bucks a day now instead of the fifty, so.
Still cheaper than Central.
Yeah, and they probably went up too.
I would imagine.
That these guys went up.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, uh, Rich is on vacation, I know, um. We had some drainage claims, we need to, they're not clean, we have.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Everyone have a happy.
All right, I'm gonna take a motion to approve the drainage plan, so we manage some. Is there a second? They're moving second, for a discussion. I mean, none of us, if you say hi.
These videos where you have left and not the sheets.
You were chair for two years, you didn't get that changed?
No.
All right.
Are we gonna bump the D D two lower H to next week or?
We can, I don't think he'll be in, I guess, it was just. Big to do about a couple of people out there and one. Apologies, personal apologies and stuff on what was happening in D D two, basically, just to make it clear, whatever Gordy had signed and. Signed somebody else's name, it was not intended to cleaning the entire ditch, and I think that's where people were looking for somebody to blame out there, and. He was just taking care of his part with several other factors that led up to getting this ditch cleaned. And I wish people would have listened to it today, but nobody did, so, um. You know, that that one name will be removed from that petition, I guess, I would assume, and that's part of the records, and it's. You know, we just need to move on and figure out what's gonna be best for that district. Um, we all got an email over the weekend, I think, from one person in support of that, um. I did not realize that that had basically been planned to be cleaned in two thousand, that whole system.
That was news to me, I went back and looked at it.
It was a split project, and they never finished the second half supposedly.
I didn't even see it in the drainage district record.
So whether it was engineered or not, I don't know, but that was. Although most apparently how the landlord left a thought to clean the north side, and they did not clean the south side.
And I remember cleaning the north side.
I kinda do, I mean, that's wasn't paying a lot, it wasn't coming up here a lot at that time, but, you know.
Which can you have?
And you can see it right to the line where.
Oh, yeah.
But then there also has been lack of maintenance on the north half with trees and stuff too, if you look at it now, which. When this is done, it needs to be on a spray schedule. I know the ditches we have on the spray catch, at least on my part, are one hundred percent better than they were twenty years ago, when we cleaned ditches, and. Guys doing our drainage just spraying has been a really good job of trying to stay ahead of that stuff, so.
So do we have to go back and finish the second half of that?
If it was never engineered at the time, if it was just done in a meeting and they never pursued it any farther, I really don't know, I mean, and that's. Where you'd have to, you know, read, if you've been reading.
I've been reading, but I can't find anything on it.
Okay.
Not even the first half.
Okay, well, then it was done.
That doesn't mean I know I'm going where I should be going to look at it, but.
Well, if you just get the book from D D, well, is that all?
I'm going on the Worth County website and going to the auditor and going to drainage, and then it's got D D two and all the stuff that's happened.
That's not even close to all the history. You need to dig into the books if you wanna.
It's fun.
Just come visit me.
Yeah, it's probably, you know, about a big, it shouldn't take more. It is pretty fun to go, actually, it's pretty fun to do, but it's really time consuming.
Yeah, it takes a lot of time.
Do we just ignore that or go back and look?
So if unless there was an engineering report done, which would be too old by now anyway, because they're good. Now, and of course, in two thousand, there would have been different drainage rules than there is now, so.
And a different engineer.
And a different engineer at that time.
Might be upstairs.
Might be upstairs. And why?
I just went back and tried to find someone.
You know, if you could pick somebody's brain that was part of that, you know, uh, that Wyatt got dropped, the ball got dropped, I don't know, I mean. Two thousand, trying to think who supervised it would have been, but.
And and that, if it would just get a little clean, and that just would have been maintenance, it wouldn't have been a.
Correct.
Uh, improvements.
Yes, well, you you look at those trees and they're thirty.
Well, from mallard all the way to a hundred and five, it's.
Well, and they're so hung up on who signed the petition, you don't even need a petition.
There was a lot.
You guys are supposed to be keeping that rain in repair.
And we've we've had several people then removes in that system for the last few years, and it's, they're they're probably lucky that it is many trees and things like that, a little bit of dipping, that's. Uh, you know, it's not, I know it's expensive, I do, I get it, but.
But looking at the whole thing is the right thing to do, because you can't pick and choose.
Yeah, and I think trying to spread it out too much is just gonna be, you know, a little more costly costly anyway in the long run, I think, you know. That suggests maybe not do the pipes, you know, and chances of not damaging some of them as you're cleaning that ditch are gonna be greasely. So some of them are gonna get replaced during this project too, but it just don't work, so. But.
Yeah, the trees, the whole project needs to be cleaned now.
Yeah. And I think it's done, done and done right now, you're looking at at least thirty to thirty plus years before you have to touch that system again, so.
Yeah, if you get out there and do like we're doing in some of these other places and spraying and stuff.
And if the landowners are diligent, when you get some bank slopping, if they call it in right away and you go out and fix that, it does, it definitely helps with siltation and stuff too, yeah, you get another couple thousand dollar bill, but. You know.
Did you take a couple of them every year, then?
Absolutely.
Having to build a whole courthouse?
Brand new system, I mean, and that's, it's unfortunate that, you know. Somebody built that system a hundred plus years ago, and we need to maintain it, so it's a tough choice, you know, it's unfortunately falls on us, so. But anyway, yeah, that's, I think we've made the corrections to any petitions and signatures and and people just need to move on, so. Anyway, all right, claims. Everybody get a chance to read through those?
Yeah, I want you to approve the names.
Is there a second? I'll second. The moon and second, and then discussion, and then all, sorry. Both same sign, motion.
Oh, you got the drainage ones, don't you?
Okay. Uh, refunds, or we got. Payroll claims. I'll second, moving second. Hey, is there any reports?
Nope.
And payroll.
Nope.
Liquor.
Nope.
Or appointments.
No, that'll be, we'll run through all those on Monday.
Okay, perfect. Mason City Fire Department requests for contract ambulance services.
Email that to you guys last week, we looked at it, and then you saw the email where he, where the cost we're gonna go to, basically paying for. Personnel. Uh, because the amount of calls up here, they would, they'll be hiring three more people. Because they shorthand themselves in other places. Uh, they do come up here, so. That's that two hundred ninety two thousand came from, and that's when you, he had that figured out, uh, before, um. So. So, yeah, that's, that's what it's gonna cost, let's say, when he's going to personnel. Basically. Cover three more personnel to keep coming this way, um, I haven't heard any out of Forest City, I'll reach out to them again. Um, because I know they were planning. Forward to for for the western portion, which would include. The Lake Mills area as well, you know, basically everything that Forest City making on that.
Which is that forty five thousand that you quoted us here that you had a meeting with on that?
Yeah, I figured that was, I figured they would have that sent here by now. I think so.
That's just from Forest City, or is that from Winnebago County?
That will be from Forest City who is operating all of the ambulance service in Winnebago, so.
Oh, so they operate like like Nels and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so there. The county is basically contracting for City to run everything, so.
Gotcha.
When they, they will take care of Lake Mills. They'll provide paramedics for Lake Mills and that kind of thing, and then they'll help with Buffalo Center as well. So, and that's, that's pretty much the same number that Hancock County pays. Um, because they see about the same number of calls in Hancock County as they do in Work County, it's right at like eight percent. They're both pretty much same number for number, that's Hancock County was paying forty thousand last year, or the year before, whatever, they were paying about forty five thousand, they said, so. Do provide service down that way.
So this is based off of calls, not so much territory.
Yeah.
Combination, I guess, yeah, they cover that certain area, and it's the number of calls in that area.
They see about a hundred calls a year in the area they cover over there. Where Mason City sees, well, five fifty to six hundred calls a year in the area they cover.
For, yeah, central court, basically, so.
So does Mason City have any historicals on what it's cost to come up to Worth County for the last how many years?
I don't know that.
I'm sure they do somewhere.
Right, I'm sure, I know, they could probably tell you what gets. Yeah. Because it's. I don't know, I can ask them, I guess, to see if they have any history on what it costs, but.
And then since it didn't pass. Wh- what if we can't come up with the money?
Yeah, I don't know what our avenue is for Texas.
Yeah.
Um, I gotta.
You can't just create a tax without.
No, I gotta read it again, because you can. So, I talked to Christie Hartschberger, her email there on this, and she said that you can go in and actually. Put a tax in like twenty one cents, maybe up to forty two, basically just like fire. Um, it'll go on trustees. There is, there is a way to do that as well.
So just on the townships?
Yeah.
Township, which would cover any town or anything too, then, I mean.
But then, yeah, what would the towns pay then?
It would be, it's twenty one cents per thousand, correct? So they they would pay the twenty one cent per thousand on their valuation, just like everybody in the country would then, which is, you know.
But we know where a lot of the calls are, so would Northwood have to?
Well.
Or Manley, or any of the other towns have to chuck money in?
It would, well, except you'd come off all the tax in the, in the town, or all the properties and everything in the town, yeah.
Well, that's exactly why it needs to be per capita too. Not per thousand dollars of level evaluation, but that's the only avenue they give you. A legislature.
So then that would, so would that have to be on the trustees' budgets, because they don't know that right?
It would be just like fire, then, if that's the case, yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, they can go, uh.
Or is that on my?
Not exceeding forty one and a half cents per thousand, that's the value of the taxable property in the township.
So that's their choice. Because the trustees decide on those budgets.
They they actually set that levy, just like they do for fire.
So how how are they gonna know when they have to get that done in the next couple of months?
Uh, yeah, because their budgets are due, just like.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should be having meetings or after the first year, usually they're not much to them, but.
No.
You guys. But that's what.
Because how are they, how are they gonna even know that they need to do that?
Yeah. So is that their estimated cost after reimbursements, AJ, do you know?
That's what the email said, they said that ninety percent of their, this was gonna pick up ninety percent of their wages. And the other ten percent plus their equipment and their billing, they were gonna pick up from revenue. That's the way the email said, right?
So they pick up only ten percent from revenue.
Yeah. I guess the thing that blows me away is Lake Mills comes in and covers Silver Lake, Bristol, Forest City comes into Danville. Or picks up Fertile and half of Danville, and then a quarter of Brookfield is picked up by Lake Mills or Fertile down in there. So basically, you're looking at three and a, three forest townships at forty five thousand and eight and a quarter townships. At two hundred ninety two thousand. It was twice as much as Mason City is what Winnebago's doing.
So you got population.
Their bill be so high.
Population.
Look.
You look at the population of that third of Worth County compared to the center part of Worth County, and it's probably nothing. You know, you got the town of Joyce, you got town of Fertile.
We got seven thousand four hundred and forty three. Population in Worth County, I took out all the towns, and then I took out that, which left us about. Two thousand eight hundred eleven people in the unincorporated area out in the country. So then you take her, then you turn around and you take that times three and three fours townships, plus you add in Hallentown. Joyce and Fertile. And then you take it times a rough estimate of the people that live there, and you still got twice as much coming out of Mason City.
If you look at it, the easy way to look at it. Is price per call. So if Mason City averages six hundred calls a year in the area they cover, at three hundred thousand dollars, that's five hundred bucks a call. Forest City runs a hundred calls a year, that forty five thousand, that's four hundred fifty dollars per call. So there's not much difference. It looks different because of the population, the amount of calls versus the territory.
Just seems like there's so many calls coming out of this area.
There is, that's what it is, but so I mean, so so like I said, if you look at a price per call, they're not, they're not too far apart. And they're and they're clean, they're, um, their revenue or what they're getting paid from insurance companies is the same. You know, there's no. That stuff's set, they they have no choice, though, that's what insurance companies pay this much, especially Medicaid.
Well, don't you get a little more if you're a paramedic going to the C as an E M T?
Because you can charge a higher. You're running a higher level of care. Yeah, so if there's a paramedic on that call, that's now an advanced call, and they can, they can charge a little higher rate for for providing that service.
So this forty percent of the calls are non transports, we're getting billed for those calls. And basically, all they got is wear and tear on their vehicles and fuel, because they're paying those E M Ts or paramedics anyway. They're either gonna pay him to sit in Mason City, sitting in a building, or they're gonna pay him to drive up and down the road. So are we getting?
I think that was part of the discussion in the paper, you had a Northland, correct, I mean. So, yeah, you are, I mean. Just like when everything's called out, there's a, there's a charge, unfortunately.
Well, I can understand having a charge for wear and tear on the vehicles and gasoline, but those. But to bill us. A non transport to bill us for the E M Ts of the paramedics, just because they went for a ride.
That's not right.
I just don't think that's right.
Well, you're.
I do agree with billing us for the wear and tear.
You're gonna pay the same either way, because you're gonna pay for him sitting there or driving.
Right. If you don't have all those calls, they're sitting there, and you wouldn't pay for those.
Right.
You see where I'm coming from?
Well, yeah.
They're already sitting there getting paid anyway.
If the people decide not to transport. That's that choice, that's not the, that's a, it's a choice.
That's right.
So they they should still, you're you're paying for the service.
You're paying for them to non transport. Whether they, whether they do or not, you're paying for the service.
And and doing with the calls, like next year could be a thousand calls and not six hundred, or it could be three hundred and and not six, you don't know.
You don't know.
By the calls, it's an easy way to look at it, but it's not the real part. As far as a cost comparison, you know, yeah, it's an easy way to look at, but yeah, it could be, it could be more, it could be less, you know. It in. So that's where, like, yeah, it's where you you're paying for the service to make sure that that, when that call comes in, you're getting that. You know, if. Because, yeah, the, like I said, ambulance could drive all the way up here, and the patient decides, no, we're not gonna transport, we're just gonna go by personal vehicle. Well, they still make the trip up here, they still did that, and now you have to go back home. Um, but you're still paying for the accessibility of that service.
Well, and how does the helicopter play into that? When are they gonna start wanting money?
Well, they were here a few years ago, remember, or it wasn't them, it was a service that was coming in here, I remember that, and they wanted. Well, at that time, it was nothing when you think about it, now, when they were asking the county, but.
Right, but I I don't know, that's, you know, mercy. Yeah, that's theirs, I don't know at what point that'll start happening, but. Yes, if it will start happening, I guess I'm not sure if it's, because like I say, for that helicopter, this county is the biggest user of it.
Probably, that's, we are the biggest user of it.
Wow.
Well, because that.
Actual trips or just calls out?
Calls out, I believe, I don't, because they don't fly every time, it's, I mean, you could probably, we could get a hold of airmen and see what those numbers are, transport versus non transport, but. It's coming up this way constantly.
It's quite a bit.
It flies over my house constantly, so they follow sixty five all the way up, but.
Yep.
We hear it every time, so it's. Yeah, yeah, at what point do they, because, you know, they're not getting paid either, unless there's somebody laying in the cot. So, you know, eventually down the road, I don't know, that's that's a mercy thing there, but.
So are we gonna get R F Ps from other people that might wanna do this? In other words, you might have Winnebago wanna come, but what, we need to work counting than just those three townships.
I'd be surprised, I was struggling for people to.
And that's, but as far as that, then we'd have to go in and redistrict everything and. Change the change.
Right now, we could follow kind of the fire districts.
Right now, we're, we've got ambulance districts set.
Yeah.
That changes, then I believe. It's, I don't know if it's an actual code, or if it's just common courtesy that the trustees pick those.
Right.
Um, because in fire, it's it's code, but with ambulance not being essential. I don't know that it's code that the trustees pick, but it's, I think it's just a common courtesy that you. For that area, you talk with your township trustees.
So do we have to take some kind of action here as a board for the trustees to be able to do this, um?
I'll have to look into that.
Her emails.
Because since it didn't pass, I didn't know you could even do anything.
That's why.
We don't have to basically do nothing.
But somebody's gonna want money, and we need.
So we can, okay, here, I'll read the very first line off. Uh, county made by resolutions. The exercise of the powers and duties of the township trustees relating to fire protection service and emergency medical service for any township located in unincorporated areas of the county. So we could by resolution.
We still.
Give the power to the trustees to do it.
But does that mean they have to do it? Because how many of them are gonna do it? Uh, I mean, I have one township that doesn't.
Do any right now.
No levy. No levy for Deer Creek, nothing.
Yeah, they just. People have been good to pony up.
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, if they would or if they wouldn't, but. That's, there is that possibility to be able to capture stuff to forty two and a half cents or whatever it is. To to pay for that, but we don't have to pay for none of it, we can just leave it alone, and then they won't come up here anymore.
Right, eventually, everything, say, we're done, we can't afford to, I mean, I get it, I, I, I get it, I.
You know.
I just, um, not happy the way we get, we're gonna tax this, and it's. Too, you're gonna pay for too many is what's gonna happen again, and that's just not right, that needs to stop.
And I'm not upset at Sarah Gordon for.
No, absolutely not.
They they got, yeah, I mean, their cats, their people have been paying for this.
We've been lucky.
We've been lucky. We've been lucky for twenty years. So I'm not upset with them at all, I just, I just think there ought to be R F Ps and find out. Just exactly where people are coming from as far as what this can be done for.
Lines of state law, I mean, line crossing state lines.
Not really.
It just. We do, don't we? That's why we have.
Well, you can get a doctor that's both certified in Iowa and Minnesota, and you can move them. Everything I.
Not covered.
Not covered, but whether they let me for it, I don't know.
I just know that's kind of.
I know the licensing.
Licensing issues are different, so there's no reciprocity, or what are you gonna say?
That's moron. I, they don't, I know they operate Minnesota and Wisconsin. Whether they're allowed to use the same people, or if they'd have to hire, you know, they could put an ambulance. In this county or keep it up there, but would they have, they have their paramedics, E M Ts would have to be licensed with I. Whether the services, I'm sure there's something to that, they have to be licensed, and I have to, but. I don't think it'd be a major undertaking, they just have to follow the same type of procedures that they do in other states, they just have to do it here.
And I'm not even saying they're interested.
No, I know.
I'd just like to see, I'd like to just see if somebody else did with that.
Just to see.
Just to see where, yeah.
You know, maybe they only wanna go so far, so then you're splitting things up, too, maybe they only wanna go to. Northland or whatever, so you know, that far into the state, what are you gonna say, you don't know.
At what point is a feasible for them to go any further, because. Yes. Depends where they're coming from. Austin or Albert Lee. You know, what's, or are they gonna, since Mayo owns them, are they gonna take them to Austin versus taking them to Mason City? That's another thing, that's about my degree and how, but they would do that, but.
And the people closer to those areas might like to go that way instead.
You're supposed to go to the. Closest facility that you'll ever carry you you need. That's where you're supposed to go, but well, well, Mayo come down here to Northwood, pick somebody up, and it's closer to go to Mason City to a heart center than it is to Rochester. That's where you're supposed to go, but well, well Mayo come down here to Northwood, pick somebody up and it's closer to go to Mason City to a heart center than it is to Rochester. So then will they take them down to Mason City? That's something that's. Be worked out up there.
If you're coherent enough, you can still ask for change, you just have to pay for it. You can go anywhere you want, if you're willing to pay for it.
Well, right, but. Yeah.
They'll get you there. Eventually, exactly.
So it's not twenty-one cents a thousand, it's forty-one and a half cents a thousand. The trustees can do.
Right, yeah. Was the, we were projecting up to what?
Seventy-five.
And that was for county wide, it was just splitting it, you know where.
And but we were also gonna have an ambulance in the county full time. So this is, we're paying for, we're just paying to get by the way we have been.
Right.
For years.
Which really doesn't work too bad, I mean, I think for the most part. For the most part, I know.
There's issues, but for the most part, it's.
Yeah.
Would you wanna use ARP money for the first year and try to get it passed again?
That's an option, is that an option?
I think that's an option.
I think that's what I read.
I think that you can use it for emergency services.
Well, truthfully, we need to start collecting money before we can do almost.
Well, even this hundred thousand that we're going after.
We got the fifty.
We got the fifty? We got another fifty, you can use that for emergency services too.
Well, that'd be the smart thing to do and then. Like I say.
And get everybody on board.
We need a little bit of a bank account and we can almost even start this. Otherwise, we're we're always in the rear.
We don't have. We don't have three hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars laying out there to go, oh, that'll fit right in. We don't have. What's that?
We don't, yeah.
So, but I mean, it's just, yeah, whatever.
Basically Mason City wants a decision back by July first.
Well, they're. They've gotta figure out their budget because if they're gonna continue to come up here, then they're gonna hire more people and they've gotta work. Into their plans to, you know.
Would we still wanna do a resolution for the first year using using that money for that, or we just do it as an action?
I got a resolution that we can use.
We can use. So.
Cause what?
I think we're on a table for a week or two here and it's, think about this.
Well, right, it's not an action today.
But I mean, not jump on it right away, weeks from now, give some people a chance to. Cause this is just the first time, you know, everybody's been kinda sitting waiting to find out what Mason City is gonna come in at.
Right, and we'd like to hear from Winnebago.
Yeah, I'll I'll reach out to Thomas today and see if they've decided. So I told him, get something in, try by the end of the year so we can have enough for working on budget, so.
Remind me, how's the eastern part of the county covered right now? So they cover all the way up to the north.
Pretty well from the interstate to the east, online minus a little bit of Danville down there, just east of Hamlet Town.
Gotcha.
Yeah, somebody's sitting way up in the corner of Deer Creek or close to Austin, but they're.
Well, there's a couple places up there, the only way you get there is going to Minnesota, come back down. So I'm just, you know, I mean, if we're gonna do something, we gotta make sure that the county is. Covered somewhere another. Okay. I'll keep it on for discussion and action, going in the first year. Figure something out.
Figure something out.
Okay, ICAP review and like review of recommendations for the jail.
Um, this is what I talked about a couple of weeks ago, um, these were the three recommendations that they sent. Um, the first one, I've already taken care of, that's with a general order to my staff on something we did in different. Um, it's just a changing, we don't do SOPs, we do GOPs. Um, SOGs and as a guidelines and procedures. The next two need to come in front of IT and you guys, I guess, more than anything. That they recommend the storage for the um cameras to be a minimum of one year. And then basically the jail is, we don't have a special needs cell, so. I just have to come up with some kind of a comment to send back to them on. What? We got thirty days now. On our camera system.
We've got thirty days for all video, if you want a piece. You archive it and then you have that for as long as you want.
But it's it's constant, as long as we know something happened, we can go back a week, grab that in both, so right, set aside, but it's just, yeah. Thirty days from today, this would have just gone.
Right, and they want a year.
Their recommendation is one year minimum, one pieces.
And that's what costs us one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost and I'll have to.
Right now, are are we storing in-house? With this new system, do we have like a separate? It's all cloud through this company. And so we'd either have to pay them for extra storage or. Well, we'd have. We'd have to end up paying them for extra storage, we can.
We need to get a little more money on storage for a year.
I mean, if we know something's there, it's, but I can see on the sheriff's side, someone being a little further out.
Yeah.
But within thirty days, you have an incident, in thirty days, somebody better be responding to whatever happened and add that footage.
Yeah.
You know, but it's like I say, lawsuits go off two years, I know, and then they come back eighteen months later and say, oh, by the way, I was beat up in jail. Well, now we don't have footage of it.
So what if we looked for a price for sixty or ninety days or something like that too, just to see? And that might be too expensive too.
Yeah, that could be really.
It's pricing on ninety days, six months and we'll share, see what they say. Do all three, go ninety days, six months, one year, just see what the price difference is, you go up. I'll get some pricing for you guys.
Cause how much will our rates go up versus how much we'd pay for that much?
Yeah, is there gonna be a rate change? We gotta follow their guidelines or is that just a? So.
And how would, how would you be able to have a special needs room? Is that possible in your?
You know, we've been looking at it, we've done some studies and that, and that's gonna be my response, I feel on there is, we're looking at things if. We try to maintain it now as much as we can, so.
Well, I suppose it depends on what capacity you're at, whether you can set aside one room, but if you're full, then that room disappears.
Right.
We know that. We touched on jail, we're not up to code, I mean, we could be. We're just fortunate, we got an inspector that's letting us.
Yeah, we can, if we move one wall, then we gotta bring the whole thing up to code.
So sad, the newest building in the system here is the most outdated as far as. Regulations.
Yeah, different inmates have changed over the last everything, ever since this thing got built.
There was no looking ahead when we go to jail.
Yeah.
They did it as cheap as they could.
Yeah, well, that's why, when it passed.
I guess, Dan, I would just respond to them that whatever you can on your end with the special needs stuff and I'm just telling them we're looking into and.
Didn't store it.
More storage. Just depends on cost feasibility basically for us.
Does they give you guidelines on how much video to have? No.
They kinda leave it up to you.
Or other counties keeping a whole year? This is the new, new process.
Yeah.
This new guy was hired just to go around to the jails, so.
Jails and patrol.
Okay.
So does he go around with the jail inspector?
No.
Say, but you know.
That's sad, damn, yes, she's gonna respond that way is. More storage, just cost feasibility or.
Open there.
Yeah.
See what we can do.
Just give him response.
Yeah, we're looking at.
We're looking at, working on.
We're working on it.
Probably definitely.
We haven't swept it under the rug yet.
Right. Uh, I think Melissa's still on vacation, she said, so Chris.
And she had my report, any questions on that? No, I don't have any, other than everything's going good.
Sure, well, in the Blizzard out there.
Yeah, real well.
Waste water and freezing, I think you saw that.
No, even like, you know, in the past, we've been like thirty below. And my tank, I'll get about that much ice on the outside edge, not to.
That's it.
At thirty below for a couple of days. The water cooling issue, this quieter up right now. Well, this is probably the quietest it's been in a long, long time.
There's not much for both elements.
People, and always inhabiting casino, cause their water production way down or.
Just maybe that time of year.
You'll go back to work.
Don't worry, taxes, tax, tax refunds will be.
She'll pick up first year.
Yeah.
Two days. All right, uh, Department has anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we had the water line break in the satellite office. Um, ICAP was up yesterday and ICAP covers both Northwood and ours, so it doesn't make a difference who makes the phone call. Um, we had the same agent for both of us. Um, they're gonna pay us, we gotta move stuff, right now, we are moving some stuff over to public health, I've gotta call into Jesse about using the offices. Our people have to evacuate it as soon as possible because of mold. Um, I don't know how long term what Northwood's gonna do, whether they're gonna remodel, what they're gonna do in there, I don't have a question right now on that. They will reimburse us for all of our wages as far as the moving of the stuff and anything that's damaged, so. Um, that's kinda where we're at right now.
Nobody lives up there really. Is it heated?
Um, partially what goes up there, but. Yeah, it it's upstairs has not been good for a long time, you brought that up and. I know when they did the study on this last group, they said it'd take three hundred thousand to bring that up to where it needed to be.
So what's our short term, long term solution if they decide not to do anything with it else? I mean, they're gonna have to provide a space for us yet then.
They did offer the basement of the city hall for us temporarily, but with talking with Joel this morning. For us to stay on our system, that would be a mess, so it'd be better if we could go to public health and be able to utilize. Our firewalls and everything else that we have right now. So that's. Right now until we see where they're gonna go, if they're gonna remodel, what they're gonna do, I don't know, I don't have them answers.
Much spaces of public health, I guess, back there, when they're.
Couple offices.
Yeah.
To the north of where they're at.
Yeah.
Got you in between.
So then you, there's a rear entrance that doesn't affect the public on the entrance, and how do, how do you get in and out of there?
Correct, there is. Right through the EOC.
There's a back door when you go in and you can go into public health or you can go downstairs into the basement.
Okay.
Yeah, the basement.
Looking at the public aspect, I mean, not.
Yeah. Yeah, the basement, um, that's where we'll be moving most of the stuff right now, and then the offices, that's what we're looking at, I got Jesse Luther and. Dennis Paulson working that for me.
Or what about the treasurer's office basement? There, or is that littler?
We thought about that, but. It would be nice to be on one level, moving all those file cabinets and all that stuff instead of going down into a basement.
I mean, as long as there's space of public health, that's great, and it doesn't really interfere with their day-to-day activities and.
I talked to Kim Henninger this morning, Jesse wasn't in when I came down here, so I I did talk to Jesse about downstairs and she was good with that.
Is that part of their contract with the city, they provide us space for?
We got use of that building.
Okay, but it's not like a, they allow you to use it, but it's not. Like a.
Depends on how you wanna.
Yeah. You know. And they decide not to do something with it, then.
I I think they're gonna have to, I mean. Yeah.
Yeah, then does the historical come into play in that too?
Well, sure.
Well, didn't lose too much or?
Oh, Jesse's office took it, the blunt and then our evidence ring downstairs was.
I guess.
Not good.
Good. Got it pretty well covered, it sounds, so just gonna take time.
Well, outside of moving most few things, your evidence stuff. What's your role or service master, whoever that truck that hires clean everything else, so. Those guys will need to be in their building. The people that are paid to do it.
All right. Anything else from Department has? Everybody good? Okay, supervisor requests.
Didn't have anything. Ended them on.
Yeah.
I had a care connections meeting yesterday. So, yeah, kinda end of the year stuff there, we just did a few contract updates. Um, and then we are looking at employing more personnel, uh, the board's approved to move forward on that, so. We're trying to do is, uh. Get a. Person over in Winnebago Worth County, so we're moving forward that direction, so hopefully we can get lucky and get somebody over here so we have. A little closer to home communications with the mental health stuff, so. Learn that, yeah, they're kinda just end of the year, just good things you have to get through, get some bills paid and they're pretty short meeting.
Mark Thompson just came on here and just said, you know, possible long-term solution could be the emergency pharmacy area there, this is an area that's not utilized. Big area, I believe.
The south side.
I mean, if the city didn't pursue fixing or something, they might look into that maybe.
But then what would we, what would we have to pay for? Our deputies are in there too.
That's part of the contract goes and. Yeah, I mean, that's something you're gonna have to look at and discuss, I mean, or we're gonna have to.
Contract right now says that they provide us with a building.
We get use of that building.
We can use that building, but if that building's not available and unusable, are we just? There's, it doesn't, the verage doesn't.
Yeah, anyway, it's just an idea. Class out there is just supposed to, I mean.
I shouldn't let that big guy leave and ask him.
Yeah, well, that's the other solution, you know, he needs to be part of that too, I mean, going forward, so. Anyway, all right, I I had nothing last week other than discussions with a couple of people, bar DD too, so. So, uh, I think for next week's agenda coming up, everybody got the Farm Bureau invites?
Are you guys able to attend?
I said I would already.
I'm gonna try to, but I'm going down, I wanna go to that new officer school on the eighteenth.
So let's start on the eighteen.
Starts on the eighteenth, and I wanna go for sure the eighteenth, get the ninth if I can.
Yeah.
Cause I got another commitment. It's gonna go down the night before, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I want it starts right away in the morning, it's better to do.
We'll cover for you.
Or registration date.
You've been there.
Was there last year and a couple of years, well, last two years. I just, if you have a lot of things on the agenda on the eighteenth that I'd like to sit in on. I'd like to go to the nineteenth too, but that's not gonna work, so.
Perfect. I'd be just for the day I did, so. That's always good to get updated a little bit, but. Okay, uh, if nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'm moving second, any further discussion, here now, I'm prepared to say hi. At the same time, motion carry. Thanks, everyone.
So Jackie, are you signing up for the eighteenth or do I?
You.